Welcome everyone, thank you for coming tonight. We'll have our pledge of allegiance and then we'll have a pledge of allegiance. And, uh, Heath, do you mind leaving some prayer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then, uh, Tammy, I'll ask you to leave us in our pledge, if you want to get through.
Father, thank you this day, thank you for your city, thank you for what you've done for us, how you continue to just love the goddess. Pray that you bless this meeting, bless our leaders, help them to have good guidance on the issues of today, and pray that we can support this meeting in harmonious manner. Christ, amen, pray.
I pledge allegiance to the God who has not the presence of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Heath. First item on the agenda tonight is a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Uh, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Okay, Tammy, Lynn, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, second item on the agenda is tonight's resolution, uh, approve the resolution 2015-615. This has to do with the, uh, land and water conservation fund application we applied for several months ago, and is to apply for a grant to go toward the, uh, a pavilion and a walkway to the river that we would like to do at the Hampton Munson Ware Project. And, uh, it says that she did Hampton, we hold a reserve fifty percent of the cost, proposed cost for the purpose of matching land and water conversation, conversation fund. It is a total project cost of a hundred thousand, one hundred seventy-nine dollars. The grant is about fifty thousand dollars. And if we get this grant, we probably won't find out till about, probably around first of the year. If it's going to be awarded, we feel like it will be, this is one of the steps in giving us approved this resolution. And we've had a few questions tonight. Heath, I know you've worked some with Nathan on this, and you have with the design, is there anything you can add to this about this project that...
Yeah, basically it's a access down the river, a ramp into the water, a small pavilion, and a small parking area. The access is already there, but we would approve that access.
Probably what we'd have to do, I think, when we talk to Nathan, is ship that access road currently there, probably over toward more of our property.
Yeah, some of that.
The access road may be actually on the right way.
Yeah, some of it's on the county right away.
So we would only probably use about an acre or so designated for this land and water. Because once that land is used for that, it has to be, that's all it can be used for from now on. So we don't need enough property just for the pavilion, parking, and the access to the river.
That's right.
Do you have a picture, I just, I can't comprehend what this is going to look like and how it's going to be ADA, whatever. I mean, I, I can't comprehend how the ramp and how the pavilion and how all this is going to look.
Yeah, we've got a master plan, we're going to talk to you about your work session tonight. We can go ahead and show it to you now if you want to.
I didn't know we had a work session.
When they're going to talk to us, when they start our update, it's going to be part of what they're going to talk to us about.
We can go ahead and show you that now if you want to.
Yes, Father.
Yes, yes.
It's not very detailed, I just kind of showed us the area of where it will be.
I asked Bert and, uh, I mean Kurt and Heath to come and give us an update anyway on the, how we're going with the Munson Ware Project. Does this show the pavilion? Don't hear.
Shows the area, what does the pavilion look like?
Okay.
What is that?
Extra stuff. Yeah, go back to the...
Very front, this front, okay.
See the access going down, the water.
Mm-hmm.
Small parking area, possibly here for a boat ramp. Uh, we have a shown pavilion, this is just intended to be a very rough master plan of the property. Apparently that's where, places where the access is at now, other than shifting the road over on there.
Right, right. Do you remember how big the pavilion we had planned?
Sixty-foot octagon pavilion, forty-foot.
Yeah. I see several people in.
This is pretty big table.
And this right here?
Is it there, Heath?
Uh, it could be really, we're, we haven't shown it on this drawing, but we're looking at that parking lot.
So the pavilion being...
How much?
Just ADA parking, some of that parking would be gravel, but I think we're just showing the actual paved concrete parking for ADA access.
Okay, so this would only be the ADA parking?
That ADA parking is in the ground, so we probably do some additional parking.
Okay, so this hundred thousand dollar total cost is just...
It's for the pavilion, it's for the access, improving the road down to the property, a concrete boat ramp down into the river, a small parking area, ADA access parking area. And then some of that was for environmental, for engineering, for grant administration. All the hundred thousand was not for construction.
Right.
That's right.
So do we have any, uh, about the total cost?
Yes, hundred thousand.
Yeah, hundred thousand. Hundred thousand, one hundred seventy-nine.
Okay, well, I'm going to think about that.
What's this right here? This big pavilion?
That could just be a future walking trail.
Yeah, well, where's the...
This is...
Oh, that's it, yeah, um, okay.
Where are these boats?
And, and this right here.
Probably some parking, some ball.
That's right.
So we're looking at...
That's, that's all included, that's all included there.
At this point in time, we have not done any detailed plans, it's just a preliminary sketch to try to get to grant. If you're funded, then pull some plans that have been done, made up the budget.
Well, now that the resolution... Yes, what the resolution is to see if we're going to get funded, there's still no guarantee we're going to get funded. We think we will get funded.
This is your second round of the application?
It's the second one.
That's when Heath, uh, Nathan came down and took pictures and all, this was...
Yeah. We'd be out more if we did it on our own. You know, with the grant, we're going to be out years' notice.
Can there be some, uh, income?
And there can be some income.
There is, that roadway needs some improvements done to it. Some of that can be done by the citizens.
There's quite a bit we can do on our own.
That's right.
I don't have a problem going to approve this tonight, the council wishes to do it, go ahead.
Well, I make a motion that, uh, we approve it.
I'll second. Is there a motion in second to approve it?
Where's this other building here? Is that part of it?
No, sir, that's not, they're going to talk about here in just a second.
But this is what we've been wanting, wanting for so long. When you are in an area, you have to capitalize on what you've got, and the Buddy Hatcher River, uh, is one of our assets here. And we've been talking about it for years, of, uh, of, of making it more available to the public. And I just think that would draw a lot of people in, once the word got out. And if we can get walking trails and all this kind of stuff, you know, I can just visualize great and wonderful things up there because of the Buddy Hatcher River.
It's just the first of many things that you can do with that property, and, uh...
That's right.
It's an opportunity to make it more accessible. Uh, I happen to float down the river Saturday myself, so I know people use it, whether we have this or not, people are going to use it. You just go by there on Saturday or Sunday afternoon and see fifteen, twenty, twenty-five cars over there every week, and it's being used quite a bit. This would be an asset, I think, for the citizens, to have a specific place to put in, specific place to have a picnic and park. You know, a pavilion like you have at the rec or something, this would be an octagon, what we have proposed, but it could change, but, um, something real nice just to start with.
Where would the funds come?
Funds would come...
The two thousand, where, where would those funds?
The balance of what was not spent out of the grant would be coming from our contingency bond.
From the bond?
Yes, yes, sir. That's right. We got a motion in second, is there any other discussion on this resolution? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, next is, uh, an update from our guests, Heath Reed and Kurt Hankins of Good Mills and Kaywood. Heath, you want to go first, or Kurt?
We'll kind of tag team them up.
Kind of tag teams, just go ahead and, you know, we wanted to get an update on what's going on.
Kurt's going to kind of update you on the environmental process.
Okay.
The site, maybe put that first, then we'll get into some of the stuff we just passed out there.
Okay.
All right, the, uh, first page that you've got there, excuse me. First page that you've got there is a, um, environmental update. This is environmental update 2015-2015.
Okay.
Just to bring you up to date on where we are, what we've done, where we're going from here. Uh, the original proposal that we brought was phase one and phase two. That was to conduct the assessment out there and decide what direction we were going to go, uh, conduct the sampling of the contaminated areas. Uh, we did that, the original proposal was around forty thousand dollars, we didn't actually spend all that money, I can't remember how much we saved, we saved a few thousand dollars in not spending all of that. The second proposal was the last time I was here, uh, talking about this, when we decided to go with the chapter thirteen plan, the closure of the lagoons, it was a different direction than we initially had intended to go, but a better direction, a much simpler way to go through ADM, uh, a much less expensive way to go through the ADM regulatory process. And, uh, at that point, we asked for, uh, the environmental folks asked for fifteen thousand for phase three, that was to complete a chapter thirteen plan, get that approved by ADM, get that submitted to ADM. That has been done and is approved. So, uh, that, that now is, is finished, and then phase four is the finishing up of that. Uh, that's the submission of additional permits to ADM to begin the cleanup work. Uh, the only one that's required at this point is a stormwater discharge. Uh, there were originally some additional permits that we thought were going to be required as part of the process, uh, and if you remember from the last, uh, last one, we had phase three and four listed. Phase four was estimated at forty thousand dollars, but because of the, the path that we've taken, uh, we're down to ten thousand dollars. So, that, that's, it's, uh, our, our environmental, our environmental folks have been working, uh, real hard and very close with ADM, trying to find the, the best and most economical way to get this done, and, uh, they've, they've done a really good job of that. So phase four, which is where we're at now, uh, and what we're asking for tonight, uh, for you to look at is to, uh, phase four will give us the, the last permits that we need, uh, to start work out there. And then phase five will be to actually begin removal of hazardous material from the site. There are, there's about a hundred cubic yards, it's estimated at a hundred cubic yards of hazardous soil out there, uh, that we found when we were doing the tests, contaminated soils that are on the site that need to be removed from the site.
Is that around the ponds?
That is in the low areas, uh, back in the back, in, in some of those drainage ditches.
Behind the building?
Behind the building.
Okay.
Uh, those were identified during the phase one part of the process. And those, those hazardous materials need to be removed, they obviously need to be removed by qualified individuals. Uh, you know, we can't just ask Joe with his flat code and go down there and scoop that out, that's, that's not the way this works. So, um, our environmental folks sent out a request for proposals, that's your second, uh, set of sheets that are stapled together. Our environmental folks sent out proposals to, uh, they sent out a request for proposals to three different companies that were qualified to do that kind of work, uh, Exotech, Saliv Engineering, and Waste Management. And, uh, that package right there tells you the process they went through. Uh, she did, she documented when it was in, and who replied, and how all that went, went through the process in the request for those proposals. Um, the, the low, uh, the low quote that we got was from Exotech, uh, Inc., for forty-eight thousand, seven fifty. And what that will do is they will go in and secure the pond area, you know, we talked about putting up a fence around the pond so that we can do the rest of the work and, and not disturb what's going on there. This will secure the pond area, take care of that fence situation there. Uh, they will begin to remove some of the water from the ponds, that's that ten thousand dollar stormwater discharge permit. Uh, they'll remove some of the water from the ponds, the sludge that is, the contaminated material, uh, has a lot of rainwater on the top of it from over the years. So the idea is that we want to get rid of that rainwater, rather than try to treat or, or do whatever to all that water and material, we want to get rid of the water off the top of it, so we can just deal with the sludge material that's under it. So they'll, uh, they'll, the camp, they will remove the water from the top of the ponds, and also during that process, they'll go in and remove the contaminated soils from the side and get those off the site. Uh, this, this will be handling of hazardous waste. Everyone that's out there, from the, from the workers, the, the project managers, everybody that's out there will be certified, uh, and that's part of the process that, that's documented during that extra package is our environmental folks checking and making sure that they have the correct certifications for all their workers to be out there with the hazardous materials. Um, and the Good Mills and Kaywood, uh, is also asking, the environmental folks again are asking for, um, as part of phase five, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars, not to exceed thirty-five thousand, there's some, uh, there's a, a billing that they have, that I thought I had a copy of, but I'm not sure I made it here with it, uh, that, uh, basically make sure that the contractor does what they're supposed to, that they'll document everything that needs to be documented, they'll put all the reports together that need to be put together for ADM that says, yes, we did this correctly, yes, we discovered it correctly, yes, it's gone the way it's supposed to be gone. And again, all the GMC personnel have the certifications and the training in the handling of those materials to do that. That, that, we, we originally were going to do this as part of the demolition and the grading, uh, but since there is hazardous material involved, and it, it's a specialized kind of thing, we wanted to separate the hazardous work from the non-hazardous work. Uh, so that, that's what this does, this takes care of all the hazardous material on site, gets the ponds to a level, gets the water off the top of the ponds, gets the ponds to a level where we can begin to manage that material, and then obviously gets the, the soils off the site. So then that would lead us to phase six, which would be the actual demolition of the building, uh, and the, uh, notice it says demolition slash recycling, uh, of the building. Uh, and again, we would want to do this in accordance with all of the current ADM regulations. This will include the recycling of the steel and the brick from the building, uh, at different places off-site. Will also include crushing of the concrete. We are going to, we're going to attempt to use a lot of the concrete that's there in the building and crush it and use it to help stabilize the sludge material that's in the ponds. Uh, that does a couple of things. One, it scores us lots of points with ADM because we're recycling something to take care of another problem. Two, if we weren't doing that, we would have to haul in some dry cement to help stabilize that area, so this helps offset that cost.
Will that pass, the, the crushed concrete from the building be sufficient for them, they're, they're aware of that?
Yeah, they, they've already been in contact with ADM about this, and then ADM is very happy about the idea of, of working it this way. Uh, also, uh, we use some of the material, uh, that we crush from the site to fill up the ponds. So again, to limit that, help to limit the amount of material that we have to haul in to fill those ponds up. Uh, and then also, if there's any leftover, we can use it, some of the low areas on the side that we're going to fill up to, to work on our, our massive, on our grading plant, or the master plant. So the, the goal in the demolition is to reuse and recycle as much of the building as possible to, one, because it's the right thing to do, but also because it helps cut down on the cost for the, that are associated with it, for the city. Hauling that stuff to a landfill gets to be expensive and hurt. Uh, the last numbers we had were like forty dollars a ton, uh, to, to dispose of that kind of waste.
Where's the nearest place to take it?
What did she call it, man, I guess it's, it lay out, but...
Lane, face line. That's what we take stuff down.
Did you, uh, ask her about her, whatever?
Jimlin.
Yeah, um, about saving some of that brick for, uh, the walking trails and things like that? As, we, you did discuss that?
We, we talked about some of that.
And, okay, and, and then what, we'll go on top of this, pardon, grass they sign over, with dirt they put on top of that?
On top of the ponds?
Ponds.
Uh, parking lot.
A parking lot, oh, really? Right?
Yeah, a parking lot does a couple of things. One, it keeps us from disturbing the area in the future, and also it adds to help, you know, because you're going to slope a, uh, parking lot to run the water off the top of it, so that it helps to keep any water from trying to sink down through the area in the future.
When the ponds are allowed to dry, or when the water's gotten off and the sludge is allowed to dry, then you're going to dip it off?
No, then we're going to mix, we're going to mix the concrete.
Mix it with it, okay.
Yeah.
So that way, there's going to be no chance in the liners getting punctured because we have no idea what's under there, and we're not going to mess with it?
That's correct, we're going to take the top of the liners and fold them over the top of it and, and cover and cap the whole thing, just like it, just like they're closing, the chapter thirteen is just like they're closing a landfill. We fill it up and cap it.
You don't remove the liner?
Y'all are pretty confident that under the sidewall liners that you're going to fold in, there's no contaminants there?
Right, because the, the contaminants would sink to the bottom, of the pond.
And this has to be done regardless, if, if we don't do anything to the building, if you don't tear it down, all this with ponds has to be done anyway.
Yes, if you, if you...
And once they're aware of these ADM problems and environmental problems, they're not going to go away.
Right, this, this is...
So they have to be done with it.
Right, right. And the taking of the building down does give us the opportunity to use some of the materials, actually we don't have to just haul everything in.
That's correct.
And there was, uh, my understanding was there was never any very large amount, but regardless of its large, small, it has to be taken care of, in the same manner?
Right, yes, right, the, the a hundred cubic yards of, of dirt is, is not a lot.
Right, well, you were discussing...
But it is a hazardous contaminating material that has to be taken off the site.
Yeah, I'm sure, sounds good. Okay. So you're looking at four and five as roughly a hundred thousand dollars?
Um, four, ten, yes.
And is this money coming out of the bond money?
I would say you would probably have to. I mean, I, I don't know, that's something we can just figure out, what's the best expense for that, uh...
Well, we've got it otherwise.
Yeah, we do, we have it otherwise, um... But it's going to be done.
What are we going to do?
Mr. Fair, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, on the Munson Ware building, you mentioned dirt. At one time, I thought there was some asbestos in the Munson Ware building?
Yeah.
Is that part of this project?
Asbestos will be removed as part of the building, I think.
Okay.
It, it's not, asbestos is a hazardous material, but not in the same family of hazardous soils.
And do we have any estimates on what it's going to cost to demolition the building? Does that include it as a hundred thousand, or is that separate?
No, that would be a separate, demolishing the building, demolishing the building, crushing the concrete, doing some site grading, that would be, that's a, that's phase, whatever we were at, phase six.
So, yeah, like the crushing of the concrete, though, if you're going to use the building's ponds is not part of the cost that we've talked about tonight?
That's correct.
Kurt, does four and five have to be done before six can be started? Or can you just kind of go together?
Well, four...
As you're getting ready to do the demolition?
Four, the, the stormwater permit, uh, will work, will go through, uh, six. So the, the four has to be done before you can start tearing the building down.
Right.
Five really needs to be, because if, if you don't fence that area off and close that up and, and take care of that pond situation, then you've got a, you've got a lot built to do.
Or you don't have to wait until five is done to start maybe advertising on six.
That's what I'm thinking.
That's true, five's a pretty good process, probably six to eight weeks.
Six to eight weeks is what we anticipated.
So while that's going on, you could be taking bids and getting ready for it, is the final?
Absolutely, we could, by the time, by the time five is done, we could have a contractor ready to go.
Okay.
Uh, on, on six.
And what, what would be the timeline to start on phase four?
Um, Jimlin tells me that she has the, she has the permit done, it's just not approved by ADM, so, uh, or submitted.
Well, it could be a few more weeks.
So, uh, but she thinks you can have somebody out there in, in a week or two weeks to get started. Uh, this Exotech is, is ready to go.
Well, may I ask, what, how, how, the, the process from, uh, four, five, and six, what's the general timeline to complete all that process?
Uh, in six?
Yeah, yeah, the whole enchilada, in other words.
Oh, enchilada. You know, three to six months probably for the building to come down, uh, is, is my guess. Uh, it may, may take a little longer, depending on how much care they take getting the steel out and getting it recycled.
So about six months for all of this to take place?
Yeah.
Kurt, is there any of this that needs to be addressed tonight as far as voting on purchasing?
Yes, if, uh, if, if we're ready to move forward, then, um, and I apologize, I had a formal proposal in my hand and did not bring it with me. Um, I had a formal proposal that showed, uh, the ten thousand and the thirty-five for, and again, that's a not to exceed number. If it were to take less time to get it done, it's about an hour, uh, billing rate. Uh, but it had a, a proposal for GMC for ten thousand and thirty-five thousand, and then also we would need to award, uh, Exotech the forty-eight, seven fifty.
Pretty sure it's going to run that total figure of that forty-five plus forty-eight. Any chance of it going lower? Less time?
And the third, again, the thirty-five thousand is about, is an hourly rate. Uh, so if, if they were to get out there and things move along, a lot smoother than I anticipated.
Are they under a timeframe?
Is he under?
Time, minutes of, uh, taking care of all this, is there a certain...
Well, the Exotech is, Exotech is not.
Not, okay.
Like, you know, it's, it's expensive for them to move their equipment, the quicker they can get out, the more money.
Okay. Well, I think we're bound by, uh, law to, by ADM criteria to move on, so, uh... I think we're bound by law to, by ADM criteria to move on it, so we'll see if we've got any choice. Would you ask for another?
I believe so, if it's, I mean, waiting three more weeks for it to meet again is not going to do anything for longer than another three weeks.
One more, I mean, I don't have a problem voting, I've just got one more question. Once the, the water's drained and the sludge dries and the tops are folded in and then it starts raining and it rains for three weeks and there's water on top of that, are they going to come back and drain all that water off? Or is there going to be any problem with that water that's on top before the building gets destroyed and the stuff gets crushed and it gets put in?
The idea is to, to take, take those dikes down in an area to create an overflow area for any clean water that we have on top to flow off.
So once it's folded up, there won't be any standing water on top?
So, Kurt, basically, what, what do you need, you know, to proceed from here tonight? Approved the ten thousand, thirty-five thousand, and the forty-eight thousand seven fifty for a total of nine three thousand seven fifty? Okay. And that's to give permission to go proceed with phase?
Right, GOC, for GMC Environmental, move forward with their part of it and for exotack to come in and start there.
Okay. I want to make the motion that we approve it and move forward on it. Got to get something done that's held us up.
Okay, Frank just made a motion to proceed with this. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, Liam. So you have the discussion. Um, favors, yeah, for a total cost of nine three thousand seven fifty. Proposed.
Could be less.
Scott, have you got that or Angela, how to get that worded for the minutes? Okay. Okay, Kurt, anything else?
That's the only environmental.
Okay.
Moving into the master plan.
Just sort of let's move into what I got you in heat here for tonight.
All right, well, that color picture there in front of you is our most recent proposed master plan for the use of the site out there. We'll just start in the, in the top left there and work our way around. Top left corner there, that's, you know, as you're coming in on the road, the first thing you see on the right is the soccer fields. We've got forty parking spaces to go with that. Then, then beside the soccer fields, we have what we call an event lawn. And behind that would be the multi-purpose, multi-use complex building. And just roughly, the way that we've got that building just thought of right at the moment, under a roof, there's about eighteen thousand square feet. It's about, it's an auditorium that'll hold about eight hundred and fifty people. Has a roughly eight thousand square feet of open space if you leave off the stage and the lobby. And then there's, there's seventy-five parking spaces of that. And back behind the building, there's a hundred twenty-five spaces and you'll see a hundred twenty-five in that little yellow area there. That's overflow parking. Our thought there is to do it similar, if you've been to the Birmingham Zoo, where they have the gravel soul mixed up under the trees. It looks like a, a natural area, but it does double as parking spaces.
You count about two hundred and?
Two fifty.
Two fifty, plus the three hundred some.
Three hundred and twenty-seven parking spots there.
Okay.
Plus if the, yeah, if you count the forty.
Yeah, you could, sure, you could count the forty. And then directly south of that, we have the, we have an amphitheater. That would be situated in basically what is the basement now of the Munsonware building. Trying to take advantage of the site as it is now. Up above that, just right off the event lawn, you see a little building. That would be a concession restroom building that would serve the soccer field, the amphitheater, and if you had an outdoor event at the event lawn, it would serve that also. The event lawn is really nothing more than a large patch of grain with some rather large sidewalks around it. And the idea with the large sidewalks is that you have a, if you have an outdoor event, you park truck vendors there, you park, you put your tent vendors, whatever, around the sidewalk and people walk around the grass to, to see the area. Coming on down south then, you run into that first city five there, parking lot is right over the top of the ponds. That's really the only thing that we don't have an option to move, is that parking spot. And then we've got three ball fields, two at two hundred and fifty feet, one at a hundred and fifty feet. And then some more parking associated with those. With some additional overflow parking there on the south side of that, that loop road. And then we look back into the road that's there now and have two entrances then into the park, making a big loop around everything. Then you'll see the, the curvy brown line, just a rough indication of a nature trail. And you know, that would obviously be determined by the site. You go out there and just try to find the best, best place to put that. Then it also then runs out next to the river and gives you your spot for a riverwalk area. We've also got a trail working its way down from the overflow parking to the canoe area, canoe laundry area. The next page gives you an idea of where within the center in relation to what's there now. And you can see the, you can see the soccer field sits over the parking and the truck dock, we'll do the truck dock area there. The building sits up in the northeast corner of where roughly where the building is now, I'm loading it up on that side. The amphitheater sits down in the basement. The parking lot sits on the pine. And the ball fields, two of them sit on what is now the slope from the back of the building down, there's a little road that runs right down here from, from this side road over to the pine, toward the pine.
That's state there, you have to build it up?
We'll have to, we'll do a combination of cut it down and build it up. We'll go back, we'll go back into this last area down here on the backside of this building and transition from up here to down here. We'll basically move the transition to this area here is the thought there. What, what this plan allows us to do is to work on that, that first part up there by the road. The soccer field, the event lawn, and the civic building, multi-use building. It allows us to work on that area rather easily in that we won't be doing a lot of dirt moving there because it all sits at relative level to where it is now. And then the site drops off from there. So that allows us to start working this thing in phases and not have to do a whole lot of grading, you know, not have to get into, you know, hundreds of thousands of yards of dirt right off. And then later on down the road, if the funds become available or projects are needed to be done, then we'll start to, to, to move that dirt. The last two pages are just an idea, if you will, of what the building might look like. The, one of the landscape architects that was helping with the, with the site plan came up with a thought or the idea to do a rural rustic type setting out there at the park. And so, and bouncing ideas back and forth, and with the idea of a barn. So that's what you see there, the front. This would be the front entry. Over here on the side, I've actually incorporated senior center area, and then over here, this is just a covered open air area for a farmer's market. And behind that, you see again, just a rough, rough sketch of a floor plan. As you see the, you see the entry coming in with the lobby area, meeting room, your big open area, your stage over here. There's your open farmer's market area and your senior center attached to that. Again, those, those are just very rough preliminary, some things to give us an idea of what size.
Something to at least consider.
Yeah, what, what size building we could get onto the site.
Kind of estimated approximate cost for the building?
For the building?
Yes, sir.
Uh, for that building, just a ballpark number because we haven't really gotten into deep depth of what it would be worth. Just a ballpark number, probably around three million dollars.
How much?
Three million.
Three million for what?
For eighteen thousand square feet.
That's what this building?
That's, again, that's just a rough, rough ballpark idea until we get the program to decide.
A lot of that depends on the use you want for the building, or finish you want for, if you want more of just an open building, you can go down substantially. A lot of that's a finished area for senior, senior citizen area.
Did you say this right here was the senior citizen area? What measurements have you got on it?
That holds about seventy-five people sitting at tables.
You said this was made to look like a barn?
Yes.
When, I know you came before and we've talked about this and you've had different plans. And then Ms. Karen Wheaton came and she gave a speech and told you know some ideas that she had. And then I thought we were going to get together with her and sort of listen at her ideas a little lower and then decide what we wanted on there. Who, and I realize I have no authority whatsoever, but who came up with this? You did, okay.
I just, we're trying to put something on paper to give us a place to start from. You know, you do like this, you don't like that, throw it all out and start over. You know, we just, we've been struggling, you know, we, we want to do, to take the building down. We've, we're working on plans and specs to do that. As part of that process, we need to work on the grading of the site and we need to know what's going to be on the site. You don't want to get out there and take it down, do some grade work, and then later decide you want to do something different, move dirt around again.
But right now, we're saying the building doesn't have to come down. We've got to do four and five. And then if the building just sits there, we'll have to bring in the powdered concrete and fill in that. But if we choose to go ahead with the building, so the building may still be sitting there this time next year, correct?
If, if we, yeah, if we don't move forward with building demolition, yeah.
This, this right here?
I hope it's not.
Um, to me, that's not a barn-like looking thing, it's just rusted. I mean, I know y'all saw some of these people in the back got issues with this, this is, I mean, you need to see it.
Again, we, we're just trying to find somewhere to, to start. We, you know, we've.
The open minded.
We've been trying to, we've been, you know, we've, we've been trying to start something, so the idea was, let's put something down on paper and if you don't like it, we'll start again. If you do like it, if you do like parts of it, we'll go from there. But whatever, you know, we're trying to get something on paper. There's a place to start from.
Well, that's all it is. We're not voting on the dirt, we're, we're just licking. Don't cost a dime to look.
If the barn idea is a bad idea, we'll do something else. Everything we've done up to this point is just conservative drawings, what I'm building, which are usually not yard. We're just trying to get some ideas in front of you to review. You know, this just gives us a place to start from. And you know, and if the barn is out, then we'll throw the barn out and, and whatever the next idea is.
Well, what, you said three million dollars for eighteen thousand square feet? Is this a ten building or is this?
Metal, metal, red, red.
I mean, that's what it looks like. It looks like a red metal building with the.
I think Ash was high on the building. I don't think that's close.
Well, actually, that, a lot of that depends on the finish of the building. It's an open building, it's a lot less. You know, again, there, there's lots of ideas about what the building is going to be used for and we're trying to think of something, you know, accommodate as we use.
Do you anticipate meeting with city, the city or other leaders to, to change this?
Sure, no, this, this is not the final, no, the final means is just the final plan. This is just a starting point for the discussion.
You anticipated changing?
Yes, I mean, you'll notice this is not a, a perfect drawing, it's pretty sketchy.
Do we have a ballpark, how much money is left for the bond money?
I got a pretty, it's about five and a half million, something like that. Of course, you know, we had one point two or something in downtown. Still got the fire station, fire trucks was four hundred or something thousand. Y'all got it from Jan a few weeks ago. It's about five and a half million left. So any of this even may have been done in phases if you just, you may not build ball fields or soccer fields. You may just, you may just start out with just the multipurpose building. And the rest of it may be done over the next few years or whoever's back in office. I mean, nothing, you can't possibly do every bit of this, this is a ten million, six, seven million dollar project. We know we don't have that much money, so we're going to have to figure out what's most important to start with first and go from there. We definitely need a building, we definitely need some access to the river, and we may, may incorporate a ball field or something. You know, we may not be able to do every single thing on this phase, which we know we won't. It's just, it's a starting place.
The idea with the master plan is just, you know, but again, that you do it.
Exactly.
And that you prioritize what you want to do or how you want to do. And just that we don't go out there and move dirt multiple times.
Right.
You know, we change our minds, say, oh, we want to do that there instead. You know, let's have a plan and know where we're going with everything, so when we are moving dirt, we know where we're moving it to.
Exactly. Hey, do you get anything else, Ed?
Yeah, my first said is it's conceptual stuff. We're looking for your ideas, that was the purpose of coming tonight, is to get your thoughts on how you want it to sleep. Or if you don't want it to sleep. You know, I, do, you know, do we want ball fields out here, do we not? Do we, more open space or less open space? Looking for some, some feedback. One thing we would do if you decided to move forward is sit down with, I guess, the full account for a committee, or you get a program together. What do you want the building to function as? That'll determine the cost of the building. Yeah, maybe it's an open air building with no, actually, they see, that'd change things, like maybe there's no meeting areas.
So what I was, what I was planning in this three million dollar building, what, I mean, is it heated? Is it cold? Is it, is this, it's wired and this is the bathroom and everything, or is this just the building?
Basically, the way we came up with that three million dollars, we took square footage times a hundred and sixty dollars fifty. Now, you can build for a lot less than a hundred and sixty dollars a square foot, or you can build for two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, depending on what you want in the building.
But a hundred and sixty is a finished building, not, not the grandest finishes that you've ever had, but a nicely finished building. Air conditioning, heating, you know, bottom floor.
You said you were still, or toward, or the open space and senior center. What else was there there?
There's a, a lobby with the meeting room.
Right.
Off of it, there's the open space, I have the stage area and the backstage areas that go with that. Then the senior center and the investment rooms. And the open air site.
And what's upstairs? What's upstairs, or is the ceiling just that high?
Mostly upstairs is mechanical, electrical rooms and our storage space.
Starting with one.
Kurt, what we'll do is we'll set a workstation real soon. We get a few folks together, you can get five or you can get twenty and you get, you can have too many ideas. What we need is three or four people, four, five people, six, to try to figure out exactly how much we're going to be able to spend and go from there. And if we have something that goes in phases over the next two or three years, that's fine with me. We'll get done what we can get done with what we got to have and go and just let it go.
We just need to, as he was saying, as, as he was saying, we've, we've got to, what, we, we want the building to function as, where, how spaces you want.
Well, we know we need one.
We want the site to function as, what kind of thing do you want?
We all know we need a building, we've been wanting a building for years. And that's, you know, that's one of our goals, that we hope to be able to at least get started and. And, um, if it's not big enough, it'll be a big enough building even if it's not finished out. I know you can have a building much bigger than what you're gonna use and finish it. If you had an open, big open space on part of it and part of it finished and closed, that would be fine. Some of the vents we have could be outside as long as it's got a big roof over it. Many of the things we do could be outside. You could always finish it in steps later. If you had what's inside big enough to, you know, do what we wanna do. But you could still have a large open space area, uh, that's at least got the roof on it. And that would be, most of the stuff we do could be outside. So it wouldn't all have to be finished inside a building. Anything else, Mr. Counsel? We have got to go an executive session for two things. One is for personnel issue, one is for business discussion. And I need to do that before we go on. So I need a motion to go an executive session.
I make a motion to go an executive session.
Okay, Tim. Is there a second? Okay, Francis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.